Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. It is six oh two P M. And this is the regular board meeting of the Duncanville Economic, Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, D C, D C. And again, we want to thank you all for coming. We're going to call this meeting two oh and six oh three. And the next item on the agenda will be invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance. So how we do the invocation and then we'll turn our attention to the pledge allegiance for the Texas, American flag and the Texas flag. So if you stand.
I speak in prayer.
Dear God, our heavenly Father, we lift up your name in thanksgiving and praise for this opportunity that you have given us to serve you by serving this community. We're thankful, dear God, that you've given us this responsibility, but you've also enabled us by giving us gifts of wisdom and understanding. And so we turn to you and look to you and ask that you would lead God and direct us so that we work together in harmony might accomplish your heart's desire for this community. We pray for this community, its businesses and its residents, that you would keep us safe. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Okay, pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas pledge, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you so much. That brings us to citizens public forum. To submit a comment via email or your comments to be reviewed by the board, the following information is required. Submit a comment by four P M. on Monday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Email Marcelo Perez at DuncanvilleTexas.gov. Email title, public comment, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. First and last name, Ann Bakers. Do you need any? Okay, maybe next time. Okay, item two on the agenda is reports. Are there any board members who would like to be recognized and provide a report at this time? Seeing none? That takes us to item two B. on the agenda, which is director's reports. I will turn it over to Mr. Gore.
Good evening and thank you. A couple of things that I want to take this opportunity to share with you. There are a couple of new faces and maybe not so new faces this evening. One, I wanted to share with you Marlon Golf and the fact that he has accepted the role of Assistant Economic Development Director. So we've had quite a few conversations about some of the things that we have been working on, some of the things that we've worked on and put on pause. And he's going to be assisting us with bringing them here forward in the near future, specifically the economic development policy, some of the staff recommendations for the grant structure, new structure, if you will, based off of the direction and guidance that we received from you a couple of weeks ago. And we are also going to be in the coming weeks presenting to you the bylaws and procurement. We are going to be consolidating the comments, sharing them with Brandon. Brandon will be making the necessary revisions and then those will be forwarded on to the city attorney for review before we bring them forward for review and adoption. I had a meeting with our city attorney this morning and shared with him where we were at with it and let him know that it was it was going to be forthcoming. So he's he's waiting to see those those documents to review them and and get those before you and get them approved before city council. So that is that is going to be coming. If I had to take an estimate between the next thirty to sixty days, that'll be in front of you. As soon as we have the revised draft, we will share that with you and provide that to you in advance of the meeting. So you have ample time to review it and you're not in a situation where you're reviewing it days before you have to take action on the documents. The second matter is I wanted to share with you that we have a new member to the team. We have Alea Murray, who has joined us. She is our department intern. So if you happen to get an email or have already had communication with her, she is eager to learn economic development and the inner workings of local government. So that's all I have right now.
All right, well, congratulations and you picked a mighty good place to learn. And congratulations, Mr. Golf, that you always receive congratulations and never condolences.
Thank you.
So, Ann, before we move on, I do want to thank Director. He attended the Red Summit and he brought back things for us to experience and enjoy. So we're very thankful for you representing us and being with us after recent Red Summit.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome. To expand upon that, we there were several economic development directors that were asked to be part of a panel. And so through there, there were a series of individuals that were asked various questions to economic development. And interesting that information that was shared with the those in attendance was that just the rate at which the Dallas area is growing. There was a statistic thrown around that every day there's about four hundred individuals moving to the D F W area. There just seemed an extensive amount of growth in this area. And they couldn't emphasize enough the importance of city councils, elected officials, collaborating with the various boards and commissions to make sure that everyone's clear on the visions, everyone is clear on their each respective goals and objectives and that the entitlement process is crucial to be streamlined and very transparent. That we need to come to the table with an open mind and be open to various housing products in order to remain competitive amongst other communities as there as there is this substantial growth.
All right, thank you very much. So that brings us to item three on the agenda, public hearings. And we have a series of public hearings for that we're going to cover at this point in the agenda. And so item three A. is conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider approval of resolution two oh two five dash four dash fourteen approving an expense with Star Transit for public transportation services to the citizens of Duncanville from October first, twenty twenty four, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, with a cost of fifty six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the president to execute the necessary documents. So to give you a sense of what's going to take place in the next few minutes, I'm going to open the public hearing. Members of the public will have an opportunity to speak for or against this initiative. We will close the public hearing. We have a representative here from Star Transit. And we will allow that person to do a presentation. Then the board, let's see, then the board will then ask questions. And then we will take action for or against the matter at hand. So with that being said, I'm going to open the public hearing at six eleven so that members of the public, they have an opportunity to speak for or against this item. So you have three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody who would like to speak against?
I'd like to speak, not necessarily. Either way, it's a matter of information. I think I provide y'all with information a while back in regard to the cost.
Name it, name it.
Nine thirty eight Cambridge drive.
Thank you.
In regard to what it was costing per trip when you rolled in the fifty six thousand that the city's putting up plus the two hundred and something thousand is coming from the government, the federal government. And it's cost us like ninety five, over ninety dollars a trip for somebody to pick up. I just wondered how that all plays out from the point of view of economics and whether it's the best way that we can transport people around where they need to go.
Thank you. Okay, so with that being said, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Well, Member Savage, thank you so much. Who's there, Savage?
Second.
So let's have a roll call.
Harvey?
Four, uh, four.
Savage, four. Zilka?
Four.
Payne?
Five.
Thompson, four.
That's five, zero, approved. Okay, so Star Transit, welcome, Star Transit.
Good evening, board. I was going to go ahead and introduce them.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yes, sorry. So what we're going to do is we are going to have Star Transit here. They're going to present kind of a two and one, going to give their update to you all on how things have been going, services, pretty much an overview of everything. And then towards the end, we will ask you to vote on the resolution. And they will also be providing comments and feedback on the concerns that were presented at the last regular D C E D C meeting. So I will hand it over to Ms. Kim Britton with Star Transit.
Good evening. Like she's. Go ahead. Do you want me? Yeah, you're fine. My name is Kim Britton. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for Star Transit. And Tommy Hendricks, who is our executive director, is also here tonight to help answer any questions. I did review the meeting, the last meeting video. So I'm hoping all your questions can be answered in the information that we're going to provide. So we're going to talk a little bit about what we currently provide in Duncanville, provide you with ridership data and then also just review some of the marketing strategies that we've that we've been doing over the last year. So we've been in business for over forty five plus years. We are a political subdivision of the state of Texas. We provide over two hundred and fifteen thousand trips per year with a staff of about a hundred. We put about fifty five, sixty vehicles on the road every day. I checked today, our call center takes over six hundred calls a month. I'm sorry, a day, just to add to those stats. We are considered a rural transit district. Our home office is in Kaufman County, actually in Terrell. And we're the fourth largest transit agency in this area without dedicated sales tax. So if you're familiar with how DART's funded or Trinity Metro or D C T A, we're number four. We do not get dedicated sales tax. Our service area includes all of Kaufman County, all of Rockwall County, Segaville, Volk Springs, Mesquite, De Soto, Cedar Hill and Duncanville. We do provide some limited transportation in Ellis County. It's we're able to do the transportation in that area because we are get a grant through the area agency on aging. So we are not the public transportation provider there. We just provide some support through that grant. And it's it's targeted towards sixty plus only. So the current services that we provide in Duncanville, we provide demand response, also known as Dial a Ride. This is our pre-book service. You can call and book one business day up to two weeks in advance. Book your trip. We are considered curb to curb. Our scheduling agents are available Monday through Friday, eight to four. And our buses provide service in this area, Monday through Friday, six A M. to six P M. This was launched here in July of twenty three. It's for anyone that's needing public transportation. You just have to be thirteen and ride by yourself. You can go anywhere you want to within the city and the surrounding areas. We do leave this area for medical appointments. So if someone needs to go to the V A, Baylor, Parkland, we can do that through through this particular service. The fares are based on distance, so they range between one and twelve dollars for those that are thirteen to fifty nine. We do offer discounted fares, which is basically half of that for those that are sixty plus veterans and or disabled riders. You have kids twelve and under do ride free with a fare paying adult. Through this program, we also have our client advocate program. This is staff that we have staff members that have been trained to travel with our clients if they need it, if they want to go shopping. We we have quite a few visually impaired riders that use this service to go shopping. And then they also can go to help with medical appointments. They can't go inside the medical appointments. They're simply there to help them get from their home to the vehicle and then to their doctor's appointments. They sit out in the waiting room and wait. And then once they're done, then they'll help them get back out to the vehicle. We typically see those that utilize mobility devices that use our client advocate program are again someone that might be visually impaired or just someone that needs some help to get to get to appointments. That's what this service is for. It doesn't cost the rider anything additional and it doesn't cost you guys anything additional for us to provide this program. So that service was launched again in July of twenty three. You just, sorry, this is our second service. Any questions about demand response, the pre-book service? So the next service we provide is Star Now. This was again launched in July of twenty three. This is our same day service. It's the exact same service with demand response. It's curb to curb. There's just it's provided same day where the other you have to pre-book. This is same day service. And you can call our call center or you can utilize the app. Our goal is to arrive between fifteen and twenty minutes. And you can book same day advanced advanced trips. And what I mean by that, if someone calls and they are going to the grocery store, they can put book both trips, the A leg and the B leg at the same time. So they're not having to wait to book that second trip before you kind of like with Uber. You just you book your first trip and then when you're ready to come home, you get on your app or you call and you come, you get the ride back. With this service, you can pre-book that second trip. And we require that. We try not to do one-way trips because we want to make sure that someone has a trip home. So even with that same demand response service, we do require that they book their A leg and their B leg. However, with trips to the V A and Parkland, we sometimes will put riders on what we call wheel call because those you don't always know when you're going to get out of those locations. And so we want to make sure that they have ample time to be able to get back from their appointments. So the fare structure, this one operates Monday through Friday, six to six. The fare structure is a little bit different on this service. It is a set rate. The reason is because it's confined to zones. And I'll show you a map here in just a few minutes of what that looks like. So rides in this zone for that age group thirteen to fifty nine are two dollars. And then the discounted category is is one dollar. Again, children twelve and under ride free. With this service, we have the ability to use promo codes. So for instance, right now, one of the things that we are promoting is free rides to vote. So you can use the code VOTE2025 and that trip to vote would be free. And that would be both the A leg and the B leg. With this service, we have added Uber and I'll briefly kind of go through how that works. And we integrated Uber so that we could increase availability and decrease the wait times. And so basically with the app, if you go get on and you book a trip and the Star Transit dedicated vehicle is going to take longer than what forty five minutes to get to you, you will have a pop-up that will say, I can increase your or decrease your wait time if you would agree to an Uber. And if you say yes, then an Uber would be sent rather than a Star Transit vehicle, but you're paying the exact same fare. So you're paying two dollars or one dollar for that trip. Any questions about that? And you can say no. It's just that your wait time within be a little bit longer. If you chose not to utilize Uber, you don't have to. Also to note, on both of these services, each service, the demand response, has one vehicle that that's what you guys are contracted for. And on this service, it's one vehicle plus the Uber. So from a where you can go with the Star Now service, this is the zone. The zone is all of anywhere in Duncanville, anywhere in Cedar Hill and anywhere in De Soto. So that same day service, you can go to these three locations. When we first launched this, it was specifically set for Duncanville, but we got a lot of requests from the C E D C to open that up to the other cities as well. So I know there was a question of kind of that tri-city. Is there any, do those we work together with those? So with this zone, yes, we've added those to other cities. There was also a question about was the Duncanville vehicles providing service for other cities? With this particular service, the Duncanville vehicles pick up and drop off. And so you're not using a Duncanville bus to go into Cedar Hill and pick up somebody from Cedar Hill and drop them off in Cedar Hill. So it is it is the Duncanville services. So with this particular service on our on-demand, again, you can leave Duncanville to go for medical purposes. With this particular service, this is that connection to DART. And I know that was one of the questions. So you can go anywhere you want to within those three cities, but you can also go to the Social Security Office, the Redbird Transit Center, the U N T Station. You can also go to the Redbird Health Complex. You can go to the Glen Heights Park and Ride and then again Cedar Hill and De Soto with this service. From a ridership standpoint, this top slide is the twenty four, twenty five. And so you can see that we have showed some significant increase in ridership since January of twenty four. You can also see that there's a huge influx of ridership in that July month. We partner with the Field House. They do summer camps during that time. And we work with them to take kids from the camp over to the laboratory or to the skating rink. And so that's why that that shoots up during that month. And twenty and then you can also see the twenty twenty three trips, so. Average wait times, again, we want to make sure that those wait times stay down. So you can see in late September, October, November-ish, that's when we added in that Uber. So you can see that wait time was brought way down from this is for the Star Now service, that same day service. And then from an elderly and disabled percentage, you can see where we sit as far as that that ridership goes. Additional stats, we have an eighty eight percent on-time performance rate. Out of three hundred and twenty five reviews, ninety five percent of those are positive reviews. We have four hundred and two unique riders. And eighty two percent, this was a number that I was really kind of excited about because we had been doing about fifty fifty. But since we've added that Uber Uber aspect, the app bookings have gone up to eighty two percent. So that's really good that we have that many people that are utilizing the app to book their trips. Any questions about any of that information? Next is marketing strategies. So to this is, and I know this was kind of this list was given during the meeting, but just to kind of go through it again, we are members of the Chamber of Commerce. When we launched service almost two years ago, believe it or not, and we did a direct mail and digital campaign. We did that along with the city of Cedar Hill. And I'll give you some information about numbers in the next couple of slides. We do targeted Facebook and Instagram posts. We do press releases. We did one post in pre-launch of service. While we don't specifically do press releases for the actual service in Duncanville, we do additional press releases for other things that we do as an agency. We just celebrated last week. We did Rider Appreciation Week. Rides were free all week long, so that's a press release. And social media that we push out and then we're also pushing out that free rides to vote. So we're constantly doing things, press releases and or social media posts to promote other aspects of the agency. We've done a lot of outreach with the senior center. I've visited with the school district with their. It's their, it's the transition program that kids that are transitioning out of high school, the special needs kids that transition out of high school. I've gone over and we've taken a vehicle over and let them get on. These are kids that are getting ready to graduate high school and go out and wanted to learn how transportation works so that they could get jobs. I've talked to churches and then community groups. We've sponsored city and chamber events with, and you can see the list there. We are working with the city on the shuttle for the Bloom Fest Friday. We did a billboard. We've done magazine ads and then we've done site visits and also an email campaign. And I'll go through that alone in just a few slides. These are just some of the social media posts that we did when we launched. The ribbon cutting with the chamber. This is the digital and direct mail campaign piece. We tar with this campaign, we targeted sixty plus veterans and disabled riders from both Cedar Hill and Duncanville. We mailed out almost five thousand postcards. And then along with that next slide is the digital campaign. We saw over eighteen hundred visitors that we could tie back to this specific campaign. And then I don't know if you noticed on the postcard, we did have the city and the C E D C logos on those postcards. Last summer, yeah, the top on the right. So we did include the logo. And then we did a magazine ad in the Southwest Now Magazine last summer, which went to over forty four thousand residents. And then we also did a billboard last May. And then most recently, we did an email campaign, which was aimed to promote the services specifically in Duncanville. With this particular campaign, we changed kind of the tactics and we targeted single car household with multiple adults. And so we sent out a little over fourteen thousand campaigns and saw an open rate of about ten percent, which is actually above average. And then we can equate over thirty new riders to this specific campaign. So we feel like that it was it did exactly what we wanted it to do. And again, that picture that you see was included in that email and we included the logos of the city and the C D C as well. Any, that's it. Any questions? Go ahead.
So how would you compare you all's experience working with this city in terms of some of the other cities that you all have worked with? Is is the ramp up to increase services about the same?
So, go ahead.
So I do think that Duncanville, it's been a little bit slower than we expected. That's why there's been some additional marketing strategies taking place. The positive thing to note there was we did see some increase starting February, March and April, kind of tied to that that direct mail or email campaign that was that was done. So we've done some additional marketing strategies within the city of Duncanville to help because there was a little bit slower year year one. And and really, a lot of the times, any pilot program that we do is is a three-year pilot. And so year one is is always takes a little bit of time. Year two, we start to see some growth. Year three is when we start to see, start talking with the city on, is there areas to to grow the service? And so what we've got right now is kind of a starter kit, right? One vehicle, a Star Now, one vehicle, the Van Response, doing that so we don't have wasted service on the road before things really start to get going.
And I've seen a posit, more participation from this city and the chamber and in helping promote the services as well, specifically over the last six to eight months.
I do think now that we've gotten some new staff from the E D C, we meet on a monthly basis and that's kind of re-engaged some of the some of the efforts with the city, getting the Bloom Fest shuttle going. I think there was a maybe a parade that we were involved in. Those are good ways to get the. Those are good ways to get the vehicle out and about and see more.
And this is you all's first time talking to this board. You all in the past have talked with city council, right?
We were at city council in January, and then I think we were here when we launched.
Well, I noticed in looking uh at the packet, and I don't know if this is a question for you guys per se, this may be more for staff. So there was an invoice in there, and the invoice was dated October first, twenty-twenty-four, so I was wondering if that affected, would adversely affect our relationship?
So, what we were trying to do, just for transparency purposes, is bring it to the board. There was a P O that was issued, and it covered um through the end of twenty-twenty-four, but that was something that we had discovered in recent months is that the P O had maxed out. So we're working with um finance to get that cleared out. But as far as for the approval for this year, again, for transparency, we wanted to bring it before the board. That was when it was brought in March for a vote, a formal vote, just to have it on record that every year you are approving that expense. Um and it's something in our recent meetings and us getting to know Star Transit and them getting to know us. Some of the efforts that we've been trying to make as staff to clean up some of those processes and make it more streamlined, but also that we are getting that formal vote from you all as the board um for every year because there had been discussion before about not seeing some of the things that were included in the budget. So again, because it was a large dollar amount, we just wanted to uh make sure that you all were aware and that you had a chance to vote on it. And so typically, just the other difference is that historically, the invoices had been issued monthly. And because we were trying to go forward and not only take care of the amount that was in the rear to also cover, just go ahead and take care of the whole fiscal year, we had asked Star Transit to reissue the invoice and make it an annual invoice rather than monthly, just so we could get it all taken care of all at once.
Any other members who have questions for Star Transit?
I do.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions about how you interconnect to Dart. I've heard people that they want to go to Dart. So what I'm hearing is that I can get to the blue line, but I can't get to the red line, is that correct?
So. Yeah, where is that, is that one, which? Do you know which?
I believe red line is northwest of here, tie into the blue line. And then our northwest connection is Redbird Transit Center. Um so you can tie into uh bus routes there.
Yep, those are the bus routes, those are the red line routes.
Right.
No, so it would just, you'd have to use the blue line to get to the red line.
So you gotta go all the way downtown to come back out on the red line?
That's the way it's currently set up now.
Can I get, can I use the on-demand to get to the red line?
No. You have to use our star, our same-day service as that Dart connection.
But is it gonna take me to the red line if I need to get to the red line?
Not the same-day service. And the the pre-book service, we only leave this area for medical appointments.
Yeah, now we could um on, yeah. Because I think that's part of the thing that came when you first came here that, yeah, you can get connected to Dart. And I think the assumption was, yeah, that's red line, blue line um as compared to the the bus center, because I know the bus center has tracks that go downtown, but you have to be on their schedule, so. It's coordinating, so does your website coordinate so that if I'm going from Duncanville to either Redbird or the Blue Line, that I can time my wait time there so I don't miss the train? Because if they're every twenty minutes, now I gotta wait another twenty minutes, which if I'm trying to get to work, now that challenges me.
We're on a Dart Sco Pass app, and so we use the exact same uh app that they use. So you can go on and buy Star Transit ticket and do your trip planning on.
Does it automatically cover to them, or do you have to buy another ticket?
You have to buy.
You have to, you have to buy a Star Transit ticket, and you have to buy a Dart ticket.
Is there any way to tie those together?
We've actually been working on um with them for several years to get on the regional pass um to where a rider could buy a regional pass and use that pass to go between both. The other two metros in the area are on that regional pass. And um we're we're hoping sometime in the near future, Star Transit will be included on that regional pass. We've been working with the the council of governments to help push that.
Well, I would just encourage you to keep that dialogue going.
Absolutely, absolutely.
From what I'm hearing is that people want to go to work, but they they're struggling on how to make that connection. And they they'd just rather just go to Clark and pick up a bus at Clark to go down to the red line. So um my other question was, I didn't see in your stats what the call wait time is if I call.
So we're averaging under a minute?
Yeah, that's.
Depends on the time of day.
Right. Eight A M when the call, when the uh call center first opens, uh they're they're really going through um uh and and breaking down that that call volume. After about eight-thirty, you're down to a one to two minute.
And how many reps do you kind of try to have on staff?
Um at any given time, we have ten.
Ten reps?
Taking calls.
If that's all day long, even if.
Uh I mean breaks and stuff, yeah, yeah, staggered throughout the day.
We we honestly start booking same-day rides at um.
What, thirty-five o'clock?
Thirty-five A M.
Yeah, okay.
Or then at six A M. Now, the the eight to four, they're booking for like two weeks out, right? We'll have somebody that calls and wants to book ten different trips over the next two weeks.
On your stats, I want to ask some questions about this cancellations. If I, I I get that you can make a two-week reservation in advance, and your medical appointment changes, doctor's out of town. If you're gonna change it, but what about same-day cancellations, like, eh, I just don't want to get out of it?
Yeah, so that that's probably what you're seeing there, the the cancellations.
So what's the penalty to the riders for canceling if you're already committed to them?
So we do have a, we have a no-show policy, right? So if we, if we arrive um at the residence and the vehicle no-shows, after three of those, the rider will be issued a warning, possible sus- suspension or possible termination of of service.
Just to kind of keep them in the right path, yeah.
And our, on our Star Now app, how many times is it that they cancel? They, or every time that they cancel, they get a notification that says, you know, we're aware that you could be suspended if it continues, so.
Okay, and then your one response time is for elderly and disabled trips, but what about people going to work? I mean, what do you see for people that are using this to help get them to a part-time job or something because they're a young person?
Yep.
Would that doesn't have drive places, what do you see for that?
So we uh for, on the younger side, and you know, um this afternoon, I was looking at some of the top destinations that are used in Duncanville. Top ten Duncanville high schools in that. And then U N T, Dallas, not just the Dart Station, but we do have education trips going there. From a work uh standpoint, um some of the ones to to note was eighty-four Lumber, uh Costco, Scooter's Coffee, and um I think Aldi's were some of the work locations that.
So they're using to get from wherever to our quarter.
And from a response time, it goes back to that Uber. If, you know, if they are not, you know, if they're willing to use Uber, then we're keeping, you know, five, ten, fifteen minutes. If if there's an Uber available, then they're there to pick them up. That's why that wait time is fifteen, averages about fifteen minutes.
And you said you watched the program last from last time. So the question that came up last time was being able to schedule and being able to book something and getting a, no, we're not available. What's up with that?
So uh it's public transportation. We're not at, we're not gonna be able to do a hundred percent of the trips a hundred percent of the time. And so it's just we do what we can with the, with what we have available.
And then how do you track those no-shows, or not your no-shows?
Yep, the day, the denial.
So how do you track that?
So, go ahead.
Yeah, um denials are recorded anytime somebody calls and requests a ride, and we're not able to um to uh schedule that. The call center negotiates trips, right? And so uh some of our denials, they get rescheduled at a different time. We we always ask our riders to be flexible. Um I think the uh example that came up last meeting, we went and looked at that rider. There were three requests that were made uh for that rider, two of them were scheduled, one of them was not. The the further out somebody can uh schedule the ride, the better, right? So schedules open fourteen days out, people are calling to to start to book. Um the example that we saw that uh the trip was not successful, they were getting a lot closer to that that trip um date uh time. And so we always encourage our riders to make sure that they're calling as as early as they can. Um and then on the, on the flip side, if we don't have it available, we do have the Star Now service that they can utilize the day of. If we weren't able to book it in advance, then we may see that ride still occur. They're just using that on the Star Now service. So I'm trying to give them multiple options.
I have the app, and I need to use it, I have not used it, but I encourage everybody to get the app if you don't have the app.
Just remember it's same-day only. So you, it says we've had some people that are like, it's not letting me book, while they're trying to book for the next day. And so as long as it's same day, then it's, but yeah, we encourage you guys to check it out, take a trip to go to lunch. You know, it's, it's a good service. Thank you for the questions, those are, those are good questions.
Questions from any other board member? Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for having us.
All right. And so at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve or disapprove, disapprove, not approve the arrangement that we have with Star Transit.
Payne, Harvey?
We got a, got a motion on the floor. He's good.
You're looking for a motion.
Looking for a motion.
Um I'll go ahead and make a motion that we um go ahead and proceed with the the second year of um exploratory service with Star Transit for the fifty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that's gonna be from the calendar year September twenty-four to, what is it? August, that. It's October twenty-four through September twenty-five.
All right, a motion has been made by Mr. Zilka, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Savage. Now, we can do a real call vote.
Okay, Harvey?
Four.
Savage?
Four.
Payne? Or? Thompson?
Four.
Zilka? Four.
Okay, thank you, council approved. Okay. The time on the agenda is a public hearing B. And uh a little bird whispered in my ear that I need to give staff a chance to shine when we're going through this. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Perez, would you please introduce the item?
Thank you very much, President Harvey. So um what we have for item B is uh just that a a hearing and a presentation of a resolution to repeal um several economic grants and incentives for um the Diamond Suite Art and Event Studio, L D G Serp Holding LLC, known as, also known as Lucent Dental, Plaza Viaria LLC, and seventeen oh three Main Realty. So, over uh the last three to four months, we had been reviewing some outstanding grants. And um I did a search into when those awards were issued, how long ago, what, if there were any discrepancies, if there had been any communication. And through that, uh five awards were identified that they had been um well past due their project deadlines per the D C E D C Grants and Incentive Application Requirements, which state that the applicants have six months to complete the work. They are, they are given a year to submit reimbursement, but really the core deadline is that six-month period. Of those five awards, grant repeal letters were sent to each recipient to both the applicant and the owner if they were different um organizations or entities. The, out of the five awards, uh the repeal letter, should I say, one owner applicant, which was Delani Investments LLC, had requested an extension, which they came to you um at the last regular D C E D C meeting to request that extension. So what that left us with is um four different um grants that needed to be repealed. Uh I will mention uh Plaza Viaria, I had actually met with those owners, they did respond to the letters. Um I met with them, however, the scope of their project had changed significantly, and they had experienced some delays with their engineer, so they had decided to just um go ahead and pull the application. They were okay with uh repealing, us repealing the grant, and they would like to present their, another application at a future time. So um this outline was presented in your packet uh with the dollar amount for each award. And when that award was um approved by council with the council resolution numbers. So in total, that's uh four hundred and thirty-eight thousand and sixty-seven dollars worth of um grants that, grant money that had been uh allocated and set aside. So uh, whoops. There we go. So our uh recommendation was uh for the board to repeal the grants previously awarded to those four organizations uh entities so that we can go ahead and clear that off the books and release that money to be uh utilized for other things, or at least free it up for uh other grants and incentives.
Okay, so since this is a public hearing, we're going to open the public hearing at six forty-nine, six forty-nine. For the benefit of the public, uh so that members of the public, if they're, they are interested, can speak for or against this particular initiative, and if you would like to speak, just stand and state your name and address for the record. So uh is there any member of the public that would now like to speak for in favor of this particular item? Is there any member of the public that would like to speak against this particular item? Chair will receive a motion to close the public hearing at six fifty.
I move that we close the public hearing at six fifty.
Thank you, members, have a good day, a second?
My second.
Mine is Thompson. So.
All right, Harvey?
Four.
Savage, oh Savage?
Four.
Payne?
Four.
Thompson?
Four.
Zilka?
Okay. All right, so um uh does the board have any questions for the staff based on the presentation of this particular item?
I have a comment, I just want to applaud um ourselves for um reaching out to these folks and communicating with them and trying to put best foot forward that, you know, we want to work with them, but we also got to be mindful of the the grants. So I appreciate your hard work on that.
Anyone else? Okay, so at this time, uh the chair will consider a motion to either approve or not approve this particular initiative.
That motion, you can go ahead and approve also.
Thank you, motion made by Mr. Zilka, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Payne. Who's on the call?
Harvey?
Four.
Savage?
Four.
Payne?
Four.
Thompson?
Four.
Zilka?
Okay, it is. Okay, it is approved unanimous. Okay, next, public hearing is C. And who turn it over to staff?
All right, so, item C is to approve a sponsorship for the Duncanville Sister City program in the amount of ten thousand. That was their request. A little bit of history background on the program. In nineteen ninety-eight, the Duncanville City Council passed a resolution supporting a sister city relationship with, I am not even going to attempt to, I don't want to butcher their names.
Monasterola.
Monasterola. And then, so the plans now, fast forward to twenty twenty-five, the Duncanville Sister City would like to host about thirteen delegates from Italy for ten days. And the goal of the trip is to promote Duncanville globally through international education, cultural exchange, and commerce. As I mentioned, their request is for ten thousand. It's to help offset the cost of their charter bus rentals for the visitors while they're here. I will mention their overall funding goal of the program is twenty-five thousand. And as staff, we recommend, our recommendation to the board is to approve the sponsorship application and to determine award amount if different from the ten thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. So, this is another public hearing. And so, what we will do at this time is we will open the public hearing at six fifty-four, so that the public can express their views either for or against this particular item. And so, when you stand before the board, if you will, for the record, state your name and address. And so, what we're going to do now is we're going to open the floor for presentation for members of the public who are in favor of this particular item. And when you step forward, as I said a moment earlier, state your name and address for the record.
And we will make announcement to the board, I'm sorry. The applicant, Ms. Sandra, is here to answer any questions you may have as well. So, if you'd like, if you want to come up and make any comments.
First of all, thank you for your service. This is a very important job. And we're asking for sponsorships, sponsorship from this board. We, every two years, we meet with our sister city. And this is a, this started in nineteen ninety-eight with a citizen from Monasterola in a dentist's chair on Wheatland Avenue with a dentist, and just brought it up. And so, this program started with Ed Purcell and Lynn Rea. And so, it has seen five mayors, and twenty-eight years of council members have supported us. This is really a great program. Even though the climate and the demographics have changed for both communities, we still support our own values, our own culture, and economic development between the two cities. We had three bids for the bus. The third bid was just outrageous, and I did not even present it. So, that's why you got two bids for the bus. This is a picture of Piedmonte. Now, this is the whole boot of Italy down here. So, Piedmonte is in the northwest section of Italy. It borders Switzerland, France, and Germany. So, and it's the second largest area in Italy. So, Torino, its turn, to them, is a manufacturer of cars, including Fiat. And it's a big manufacturing city. This little dot is Monasterola. It's only thirteen hundred people live in this little commune, but they're part of this province of Cuneo, which is five hundred thousand people. This whole Piedmonte region is over four million people. And so, it's like one hand touches the other. Even though they're little, we have access, and all these people support this little community. We decided about six years ago, it was too expensive to do this exchange every year. So, then, that's when we went on to a two-year exchange. So, we were there, Duncanville was there two years ago, and so, they're coming here now. And then, in two years, we will be going there. So, that's how we do it. Everyone has had a great time. On this last trip, when they came here, we actually had an eighteen-month-old child brought over. And unlike our kids who need all these toys and gimmicks, that child just sat on the parent's lap. They're very, very family-oriented there. We had six young adults come. They were between eighteen and twenty-five, and then, the rest was all across the age range. So, they will be here October fourteenth to the twenty-fourth. And why am I here? Because four years ago, we had a major bus sponsor, and that company, a big company in Duncanville, was sold, and we lost our sponsorship. So, that is why I'm here asking for this money. We expect to have full community involvement. If you want to find out more about us, we're on the city website. Look under Resident, and then, look under Sister City, and our website is up to date. Hopefully, in a few years, we may have another sister city from Colombia, or Peru, or Africa. But I'm hoping this is a good jumping point. We had a lot of problems because this city has had such a quite turnover, and even look at your employees, no one knows about the sister city program right now. Very, very few people know about the program. But there's our plaque right there. So, we're a bona fide contributor to this city. We will involve all the, we will involve and have exposure to all the businesses in Duncanville and on all the citizens. We will have three events where the, which will be opened up to the citizens. The first day, they arrive. The citizens are all invited to an open reception at the Senior Citizen Center. On October nineteenth, they are invited to a community breakfast. And then, October twentieth, they're again for farewell. They're all invited to the Senior Citizen Center. So, we really want the community involvement. This, Duncanville and Monasterola are now part of Sister City International, and that became a fact last June. So, the one-year anniversary is coming up. On the twenty-fourth, we hope to have all five of our mayors there, and then, two of their mayors there to do an official signing. So, we were going to do it over Zoom, and I thought, why waste this perfect opportunity? So, that's why we're going to do that. They're known for Monasterola, for this little community of thirteen hundred. They do pet food to all of Europe and Asia, this little tiny community. They have a huge recycling plant for Europe. They're known for metal works, cabinet making, and cheese and dairy production. I'll just give you one little example. And when they visited the high school, because they're going to visit the high school, they're going to visit everything in Duncanville. But they do farm-to-table there. So, the dairy farmer has his cattle, and with the urine in the feces, it goes to the gas company and electric company for fuel, and it's turned around. And they use very special grasses to feed their cows for the different kinds of cheeses that they produce. The cheesemaker there provides cheese for Italy, Europe. So, this little community is really involved. The grocery store's wife, she has a frozen fish truck, and she drives down to Legoria, which is here, and she picks up fresh fish every day, and then, she supplies it to all the restaurants. So, this is a very, very industrious, family-oriented community. I would, I think that's enough for me. Ask me some questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have a question. You mentioned visiting this, well, two questions. The first is, how many citizens are coming?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. And you said you are visiting the Senior Citizen Center. Is, what else is on your itinerary in Duncanville?
In Duncanville, we visit the fire department, we visit the police, we do the law, everything that's Duncanville, we visit. On the last visit, we visited the quality cabinets, and we visited the trucking company in Redbird that does air conditioning. So, we did that. We also visited the music museum in Duncanville.
Where will they be staying?
They will, that's a great question, I forgot that. They will be staying with host families. So, the host family will give them a simple breakfast, a clean room, and then, they will take them to the bus every morning and pick them up from the bus every morning. And then, on Sunday, they will have time with that host family. So, after the community breakfast, they go back to the host family, and they spend the whole day with the host family.
And my last, will they be visiting any vendor stores, restaurants? Is that part of?
They will, I know they're going to Seaborne. They will be going to the McDonald's. They love the potatoes. Yes, that, yeah, that's, we have a root.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay. I will, Sandra, could you explain to the board the, kind of the layout of the buses in what, where all the residents will be going?
No, I think, I think you have a copy of that.
Yes, it was in the packet. I was just, just in case there were any other questions, since that was presented just in the itinerary.
I think that was in the packet.
Ten days.
They will be, out of ten days, they will be in Duncanville proper area, six to seven days. And so, that's will be their exposure to Duncanville. They will, Jane Nelson, who's our Secretary of State, her daughter was married in Monasterola. She goes there every two years, and she does economic development for the state of Texas in Piedmonte. So, so she is really crucial for us. Also, she does not know if Craig Abbott will be in town in October yet, but if he's there, we hope to see him. And you know, he's a Duncanville native. He was in sports here, and track and football when he was here, and his mother lives in Cedar Hill. So, I think it's really good to keep that connection going with those people, because if we want something from them, they know where Duncanville is.
So, and this may be a kind of unfair question for you.
Never.
Do, does the city hall over there still have the setup for us? I remember.
Yes, they have, in the castle.
Yes.
Yes, in the castle, they have a tower, and in that tower is called the Duncanville Tower. And everything that we have given them is in that tower. It's revered. Yeah, it's really revered, yes. And when you did the remodeling here, the showcase of everything that they gave us, it's gone out of the frontier. And so, we have been chasing it down. Some, some, some people have stuff in boxes that we're trying to gather, and from what I understand, it will be going to the library, everything that they have given us, that we can gather up. I didn't mention the city is partnering, partnering fifty percent with us. So, we are partnering with the city of Duncanville.
So, I think that takes us to the end of the public hearing, unless there's some member of the public that wants to speak against this initiative we've heard for. Anyone who needs to speak against. So, with that, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing at four thirty.
I'm...
Name and address for the record.
French Rocky, Queens, St. Andrews Place in De Soto. Sandra and I have been married a while. Kind of a silent partner, and she does all the work, and I get to share the credit. But we have traveled to Monasterola as well. We've had, we've hosted families. I guess it's always ninety-eight. It's interesting to see the teenagers who came over here last century now have their own teenagers. And it's just, it's just a very pleasant time to be together. You know, it's interesting whenever I go, I travel around Dallas County quite a bit. "Oh, you're from Duncanville, what do you do?" "Oh, we have a sister city in Italy." "Oh, really?" "What do you know, you've done that twenty-five years?" "Oh, oh." You know, it's something that, it makes me very proud to be from Duncanville. And I think it's a feather in our cap. And we've certainly gotten the attention of the Secretary of State of Texas, and also our governor. So, there's just a lot of great things here that are just quietly, just not right out in the public as much as I think we should. But with that, I'll be quiet. I don't know if anyone has a question for me. She does all the work, but I mean, I'll share the credit, you know, you know how that goes.
All right. So, the chair will accept a motion to close the hearing at seven oh nine.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Savage, is someone going to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Payne, okay. Hey, let's have a voice vote.
Okay. Harvey.
Four.
Savage. Payne.
Four.
Thompson. Four. Zilka.
Four.
It's really my name. People struggle that often.
Okay, so, now, we're at the point where we need, as a board, to consider whether to approve or disapprove, not approve, this item. So, before we, before I call for a vote, are there any questions for staff? Any other questions at this time? On this mission?
I have a clarification question. Sorry if I missed it. They asked to be a silver sponsor or diamond sponsor? Because the dollar amount coincides with that?
We didn't discuss that, but would, would that automatically make the DCEC, if they sponsored at the ten thousand level, would that automatically make them the diamond sponsor?
That'd be great. Love that.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Now, the chair will entertain a motion to approve or not approve this initiative.
I move that we approve the initiative as detailed.
Savage? Is there a second?
I second.
Now, Payne. Voice vote.
Harvey.
Four.
Payne.
Four.
Thompson. Four. Savage.
Four.
Zilka.
Four. Okay, so, we are at the last public hearing, and this is my cell phone. Hope we're going to have a different speaker this time? And this is myself. Hope we're gonna have a different speaker this time?
Yeah. I'm glad.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. And so before I get into the presentation that we asked us before we do this evening, I wanted to start by, by letting you know that the business owners, Matt Volkey and Corey McCoy are here to answer questions about their ask. And really, I would put it in, everything that's been exhausted to get to this point. And to let you know that if we're, if we're coming, or they're coming with the ask, it's not because they want to, just because it just has to be, because all options have been exhausted to make this deal work. Also is Monty Anderson. Monty has been assisting with working with this deal. And we've been having lengthy communications over the course of the last few weeks to get to this point. But quickly, I will kind of take a quick trip down memory lane. Several months ago, there was an economic incentive agreement that was presented and approved ultimately by city council. For the properties two twenty North Main Street, this is the property just south of the Ben Franklin, currently the T V repair shop. This was to give the applicant, in this case Cortina World Buy LLC, three hundred thousand dollars for proposed interior and exterior improvements to the property. This money was going to be given to the bank and the bank was going to be in charge of the disbursement of those funds. The money was going to be given to the bank at the time of closing. And the agreement was written in such a way that there was clawback provisions in, in the agreement for every year that the business was open, there would be a certain percentage of the original three hundred thousand dollars that was going to be forgiven. The loan, the agreement was written in such a way that it was a ten-year forgivable, forgivable loan with a personal guarantee for Matt Volkey for the dollar amount in the event that the business closed within, within the ten years. On top of that, there was a projection, or there still is a projection of approximately twenty-seven to thirty-two jobs that would be created as a result of this opening of this establishment. And there were projected revenues year one of one point seven million, year one, year two, two point one million, and year three, two point four, two point four million in sales. And so this is just a map depicting the, the subject property in the area. This is a breakdown of some of the proposed improvement costs. And again, really just using these slides, just to quickly take a recap and go back where we were a couple of months ago and kind of really set the stage for this evening's request. So we had three hundred thousand dollars, we have the approval. Again, we talked about the number of employees, projected sales volume. Already went through the ten-year forgivable loan and the personal guarantee. And all in, we were talking about anticipated costs with acquisition and renovation costs anywhere in the ballpark of a million to a million two, all in, if you will. And then here we have just the revenue forecast. We talked about, we talked about the one point seven to two point one and what that it means in terms of sales tax revenue for the city, years one, two, and three. As you will see in the first three years, we're looking at over a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in sales tax revenue generated from this business. Again, these are very preliminary numbers based off of the information that we have been provided. Just to give you an idea of the impact that a business of this caliber, of this nature, what we're talking about in big picture, you know, at dollar amounts. And here's also a projection of property taxes, you know, with the kind of investment that we're looking, that the owners are looking to make on, on the property and what we're looking at. Potentially acquiring, and again, and again, I can't emphasize this enough, that this is the city's portion of it, not the other taxi bodies, is that correct?
Yeah, so, thanks Victor. So the first column, we're showing with our top line, current value, current assessed value and the current amount of avalon tax revenue that the city collects, right? And so then the next line, after the project is brought online, we did a quick and dirty analysis, let's say if eighty percent, right, of the hard construction costs were captured as assessed value. So we, we established that as the benchmark for the year one assessed value. And then the green column represents the city's portion of the property tax value that, that we're forecasting. So those are the two columns. Right? Assessed value and then property tax revenue generated for the city as a tax entity.
So why we feel that this, these forecasts are important is, you know, to, to answer the question of, what is the city's return on investment? We're talking about partnership and the amount of at least, talk about the initial approval of three hundred thousand dollars. And what is the return on investment or what is it that we know that the city can expect to get in that with this kind of partnership, with this kind of participation? Again, to set the stage, you know, we're looking at those kind of dollar amounts. Again, from a sales tax perspective and property tax perspective, these are just what we anticipate as direct benefits as a result of this kind of partner, partnership. What we're not talking about, we have no control over is the additional investment in the area as a result of this investment and the catalyst that could be to adjacent properties and adjacent investment. Again, just sticking to the property and what we have, what we have on hand. And, and these are the drawings that were presented some time ago. The plans are still the same in that we're talking about the business owners opening up another facility. The owners of Encina opening up another facility in Duncanville where this is a situation where they're, in their current facility, they're leasing. And unlike that situation, this is an ownership situation. So we went through some of the proposed projections, sales, et cetera. This is just a picture of the subject property, you know, different angles, the proposed layouts. There is one section that's going to be in the back to be reserved for, for rent, for additional income. The entire building is not going to be used for the proposed restaurant. But this is a way to kind of offset some of the, some of the costs with the property. And again, you've seen this before, but I just quickly wanted to kind of walk you down, you know, what was presented, what, what, what the vision is for this property, build outs, et cetera. This is just interior and some of the, some pictures depicting some of the exterior improvements. Again, just facade renovation, adding its own unique character, unique character blend to it. You know, providing an opportunity for different kind of dining experience and really rejuvenating, revitalizing that Main Street corridor by this type of investment. It's something that the city has not seen in some time. So this is a welcome opportunity, welcome investment. But unfortunately, and now here we come to the ask, if you will, is we have a situation where the business owners are having a very difficult time and have had a difficult time in securing a loan for this project. The short story is, without getting too deep into the details, and really getting to the point is that just the numbers don't work out. When you factor in the acquisition cost, the improvement cost, all in, you're talking about a project well north of one point two million dollars. The banks, and please forgive, please feel free to chime in if any of this is incorrect.
It will.
Give me a second.
Have a summary.
And so what we have, we have a situation that very few lenders are willing to participate and fund this kind of project because it's considered risky project, especially when you're talking about a restaurant. In this instance, it's a little different in that you have someone that is seasoned. This isn't a first go, someone that knows the market, but even then, the restaurant business is very risky. The success rate is low, not to wish it. But I'm just saying, from the bank's perspective, it's, it's just, it's the numbers. And so a number of, a number of options have been exhausted. This loan has been presented to a number of different lending institutions. As you will see when we started this agreement, we had one financial institution and now we have a different financial institution with, which it appears that this time around, we might be able to have this lender approve a loan. But in order to do it, it needs, requires additional participation from the D C D C to make this happen. Now, the agreement that's in your packet involves a request of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But I will admit that was not the original request and that was not the request that we received last week from the applicants. The request was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Seventy-five thousand dollars of which was being asked to be given, provided to the owners. And we changed, we as staff changed the deal, if you will, to what is currently in your packet. The applicants would like an opportunity to make the request and make the plea for the additional twenty-five thousand dollars in the manner that was originally presented to, to staff. We have a situation where time is of the essence. They would like to close on the property on May fifteenth. Actually, that is a set, that is a set closing date, not so much by the buyers, if you will. It's been set by the seller. And there have been a series of extensions that have been provided to kind of keep this project going. But again, we have a situation here where the ask that's before you is not one, excuse me. I got a bit ahead of myself. It is not one that's before you, just because, if you will. It's an ask that has been given a lot of thought, a lot of crunching of the numbers, crunching of the pencils and just, again, shopping it around with, with different lenders and really trying to make this a viable project for everybody. At this point, I will hand it over to the business owners and I'm a project manager to a certain degree or facilitator of this transaction to add any other information that I may have missed out, left out or just correct, if you will, please. Thank you.
If you will.
Yes.
Mr. President here, I would like to, I'm Monty Anderson at twelve ten Greenleaf here in Duncanville. And this is Matt and Matt and Corey that own Encina. And I think most of you know what Encina is and the kind of quality we're, we got a chance to get. And what I thought I'd do, I have a summary sheet that might make this really a lot easier to understand everything. So if I can just pass these out to you. This will just be easy to, to understand. And then, I don't think, you didn't get this today.
Board members and other members of the public have a, have a copy.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do here is I'm gonna summarize total cost, equity, financing, grants. And you've seen a lot of this already in the breakdown. And then we'll talk about the bank and what happened with the bank, the lenders. We've sent this to more than five lenders and been turned down by all of them. Even Bank of DeSoto, who's very good about lending in Duncanville. And so finally, we have a bank, Pegasus Bank, who has made us, made a loan and it's been appraised. It's ready to go and here's where we're at. I mean, so we're gonna start with property contract here. Here, this is the cost to acquire, design, engineer, equip and prepare this for opening. This is everything to get it open. So the contract amount is four hundred and ninety thousand. And then we've had to give the existing seller eleven thousand extra dollars plus a bunch of earnest money too. So over twenty-something thousand dollars to the seller just to hold it together because it's taken us like seven months into this deal, so, you know, she's been holding this. So we had to pay her along the way. So she's gotten some money that doesn't count towards the purchase price and some that's earnest money that it's gone if he doesn't close. He just had to pay her. And then we got construction cost, engineering and design, six hundred and fifty thousand. Contingency and soft cost, eighty-five thousand, furniture and equipment, forty thousand, opening, supplies and operations, seventy-five thousand. And these numbers have been vetted by the bank and the appraiser and the, on the lender. These have all been vetted through, through that process. So that's a million three hundred and fifty-one thousand. That's our latest number. That's, that's an all-in number. The provider of the funds, so that's a million three fifty-one, everything it's gonna take to get them open. The provider of the funds, Pegasus Bank, is only making a six hundred thousand dollar loan. So it's less than fifty percent loan. And that's, that's very unusual. So banks normally want to give you, you know, maybe eighty percent or seventy percent. Right now, it's tough. Right now, it's sixty, seventy percent. I mean, thirty percent down would be a lot, you know? And it's a couple of problems. Appraisal's a problem because of Duncanville's, you know, comps here, that's a problem. And the other thing is, just no bank wants to take a chance on this over here. And even though these guys have excellent credit, perfect credit, it's not about their credit. It's just about, you know, what, what we're doing. We're taking this old TV shop, right? It's like, who, what are you, you know, what are you doing? And so we went to the Texas Mezzanine Fund. I don't know if it was familiar, anybody? Patrick, you familiar with Texas Mezzanine? Do you know what a C D F I is? Community Development Finance Institution. The C D F I is a nonprofit bank. And Texas Mezzanine has been around for a long time, working in Southern Dallas County. They made me a loan years ago on my hotel in Oak Cliff on the furniture, fixtures and equipment. And what they do is it's a second lien loan. So the bank comes in at a first lien, it's six hundred thousand. And then Texas Mezzanine comes in, a nonprofit, they're for basically growing small businesses. That's what they do. Help grow. And they come in at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a second lien. Okay, and then the owner equity, what they're putting in, in cash, which has to be put in upfront, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then, then your grant, you previously granted them three hundred thousand. And that's a total funds of a million two seventy-five with a shortfall of seventy-six thousand. A shortfall of seventy-six thousand. And we've done, we, if you, as you can see, I mean, we've stacked the capital. This is called a capital stack. If anybody ever says this is, that's what this is, is a capital stack. Okay, and, you know, we've done everything we know to do. So, you know, we've, we're, you know, trying to, to make, I mean, to do, to get this, get this going right now. And Ben Franklin, I tell you, doesn't help very much being next door. I mean, I hope somebody comes along pretty soon and does the same thing, or maybe this will encourage that. But, you know, this, I, I just tell you, Victor can tell you too. We've just done everything we possibly can to beg and borrow and put these pieces together to make this work. It is ready to close. It's done, ready to close on May fifteenth. If, well, if this goes through tonight and it goes to council and goes through, this deal will close on May fifteenth. It'll be a real deal. And the bank will get the money, the three hundred thousand. And then we ask for the seventy-five to be done differently on that in the agreement. We've marked up the agreement that you have. But we get the, we'd get that upfront, but the bank would get that bulk of that money, the three hundred thousand. And they would, they would distribute that out as the project is built. So you're, you're, and this is a three-party agreement. Your, your, your agreement has the bank listed in there. So they get all the money. They have to, you know, do the work, get it, just get the money drawn out just like it would on a regular construction loan. So you're protected and, you know, with, as long as the bank and you are protected together, them doing the work and finalizing. And there's just no, there's no, there's just not, there's no, we can't even hire a general contractor to do this. We're having to do this is what we call a design build with us and with them. We will serve as the general contractor and the bank will allow me to do that since I do it anyway. So allow me to oversee. They couldn't do it on their own, but we'll do it. So if we hired a general contractor, we'd be another hundred thousand, maybe another hundred thousand or more in the hole here. So we couldn't get it, we couldn't get it done, so. We've done everything we can and, you know, I didn't want to come here. I don't want to come here and ask you for this, you know? But I don't have any choice so to, on their behalf. And I'm not an owner, just by the way, I'm broker in the deal and doing project management here. I'm not an owner in the property. I'm not an owner in the business, just, just to, you know, tell you. They're, they're gonna be able to own this by themselves. So having partners and things like that, which makes their success rate higher. A lot of these restaurateurs have to take on partners and stuff. And there's a lot of people to pay out of these. And there's just not that much profit in these restaurants to be able to pay out all of those kinds of profits. So I don't have any future gain from this, except that it helps the whole, it helps our whole venture, right? Our whole ventures together, helps Main Street for sure. So with that, they're here and I'm here for any questions or anything that you'd like to ask.
I think at some point, because this is called for a public hearing, so it seemed to me at this point we need to open a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Matt Volkey, five zero two five Capital Avenue, Dallas, Texas. And I can say, we're this close. It has been a run. It has been nerve wracking. It has been draining. It has been expensive. We were having to keep the building from going back on the market. And we put in twenty grand of our own money to keep the seller from selling it. So, you know, we're as invested as we can be and excited to be able to, you know, provide something that, you know, Duncanville needs, wants. It sounds, there's a band member from a bar down the street. He lives in Duncanville and he randomly texts Corey and said, I hear you guys are coming to Duncanville. I'm really excited. I guess he follows the city council meeting, so, you know, I, I. You know, I, I find it to be a really awesome opportunity and to have, you know, the first piece of property that we own. You know, that, that's a big step in our lives and it sounds like, you know, it's what we would like to do, it's what we need to do. Our dedication to our restaurant right now in Oak Cliff, I mean, I know some of you've been there, we're there every day. It runs smooth, it's great. So, you know, our attention and focus will be on getting this one running, you know, operated at a high level as, as we do in Oak Cliff. So, like I said, I'm with Monty, I, I hate this part of it, the asking, the pleading, but we are at that point where. This is what we need, or this is what we, you know, to get it over the finish line, so. Thank you for your consideration and if you have any questions, I am an open book.
Okay, any questions for the owner?
So, can you explain your operations, what I saw, the, the back meeting rooms, are those able to be expanded for additional seating? If, on a Friday night, if it's super busy, that, that you can accommodate more people than your main floor plan?
No, those last two buildings would be rental units, so it would just be, it would take our payments down from the restaurant. And it would put it onto the other two rental properties in the back, so now it would just be the capacity of the main dining room and then the front patio.
But can I have a social function in there? I mean, is that the goal?
Oh, of these rentals spaces?
Yeah.
They would be, no, they would be, you know, operated by another business.
So that would be an income to you all?
It'd be an income toward the, yes, well, I mean, toward our loan payment, they would.
Very small, one of them's like less than four hundred square feet.
So it would be above and beyond your restaurant and your bar sales, correct?
Yes.
It'd be some sort of thing, but then I guess what I see in town is a lack of meeting room space in town. I've heard people going over to the collab sites and they really love that. And so this space here, could that be a place that businesses can meet? And what, what can they do in those spaces that you guys can support them with?
I mean, any sort of small retail shop would work, you know, anything from calligraphy to floral or, you know, ammo. I know that there's a small ammo shop that, that Monty runs, so anything that, you know, would require a minimal amount of space to, to operate their business. But, and so we would, we would build it in a way that you could section off like this, so if you needed a private dining room area. That, you know, we would have it where the doors could close and then you can just rent out the patio, that's how we do it. Our space in Oak Cliff is, it's divided. So the patio is separate from the inside, they're both covered and air-conditioned. But, you know, on a Friday night, we'll do a patio buyout. That'll be solely for wedding reception and the inside is just regular restaurant business.
So nothing in the back could be used for a restaurant as well?
Not as of now.
So just a quick, yes, the two back spaces are intended to be an additional source of revenue to, to help with the debt, the one point three billion dollar debt. And to not put the entire burden on the restaurant a hundred percent. And it's an opportunity to use that space to get additional, to kind of relieve some of that, some of that burden of, of the restaurants. If there's an opportunity down the road, I would imagine that that would be explored by, by Matt and Cory to expand for the business needs. But day one, it's a, it's a situation of what's needed day one? And could they use additional revenue coming in to help with that hefty note?
And are those rental rates included in the numbers?
No, that has not been included.
So that's above and beyond what, what they're projected to be.
Yes, that has not been, that's not factored in only because of the substantial investment that needs to be into the acquisition and the buildups. And that even after that, the work is done, the units could remain vacant for some time until they're occupied. So it's not a situation where day one, they'll start generating income, because those units involve a significant amount of work to just get them into a vanilla box. To get them to a place where you want to market them as available space.
Remember, the, build it, the whole property's thirty-five hundred square feet, this is a very small portion back there. One of them's less than four hundred feet and the other one's less than six hundred feet, so they're very, so this is about the same size. If you've been to Encina, this is not much different than the size they have in, in Oak Cliff.
Yeah, we have twenty-five oh two.
Twenty-five oh two, they'll be in around twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four hundred here, so it's really, really much the same. If, if, one of the things, if, if restaurants, I always, I, here's what I say, if restaurants in Dunkinville are too big. You know, you're only as good as your weakest night. And so what you want them, we want them, in my opinion, we want them tight, so they're busy on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. You know, and, you know, not just Fridays and Saturdays, cause you can't live by Fridays and Saturdays alone. And plus, when you're connected to the neighborhood, if you have too big a restaurants and then you overflow into that neighborhood with cars and things, you know, we, right now, it's. It's a good balance, I think it's a good, in my opinion, it's a good balance, so. And it makes where they can have it busy every night instead of, you know, just Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, cause there's nothing like an empty restaurant to just really tear your heart out and so, you know, a hundred and fifteen seats, like a seventy map.
Where am I?
So.
Do you know where Ben Franklin is?
Yes.
If you, it's right next to Ben Franklin.
On the south, between the parking lots.
It's the old TV, it's the TV Dunkinville TV store.
Okay, I'm with you, thank you.
Something with built-in parking netdismantling and then the fronts. I mean, it's, it's, it's a gravy spot for like a really beautiful, well-done restaurant. So like it just kind of checks all the boxes for us and, you know, it's, you know, every time I ask somebody for Dunkinville, where do you eat? And they say, in Dallas, so it feels like we could, you know, keep the money here. And, you know, provide dinner for the, the board. It's not a bribe, I promise.
None taken.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the maximum capacity of the restaurant?
Will be about one fifteen, all in. Seat-wise, that's what we are in Dallas, it's a very comfortable number to not get overrun and overworked. It allows us to do food in a more refined manner, to not just have the, you know, same chicken tenders and french fries out of the fryer. It, you know, allows us to do, you know, certain dishes that in a larger restaurant, we just couldn't keep up with supply and demand. So, we, you know, like Monty said, you know, a little tighter of a restaurant, really, you know, allows us to showcase what we're known for.
Operating hours?
We will be lunch and dinner brunch on Saturday, Sunday. So we'll be up in a lot of hours. At our current restaurant, we are closed Sunday, Monday, or sorry, we're closed Sunday night, Monday, Tuesday. So we only do four dinner shifts and two brunches. And so, you know, that allows us time here. And I think it needs to be an all-day restaurant, lunch is important, brunch is important, I know we get a large crowd from Dunkinville of our Sunday brunches. So, you know, we will do the same, we're about to take our pancakes that we do for brunch, they're about to go into HEB. We wanna contest the quest for Texas best, so, and I know Joe V's is right down here, so we would request that they go in there too. So it'd just be, you know, part of our restaurant in Oak Cliff and our sister restaurant here in Dunkinville and then HEB, so, you know, it would be a, be a good reach for us.
How many employees?
Anywhere between twenty-seven, thirty-two, is what our rough estimate is. That is, we're at twenty-two at the current place, just our hours. We have one staff, so it's one kitchen staff and one front-of-the-house staff, cause we're only open, you know, the, the five days. So here, it'll be a little bit different with having multiple shifts and longer hours. So we'll need bigger staff to, you know, keep overtime to a minimum.
I've never been to the, the Oak Cliff one, you sell alcohol?
Yes, a lot.
You gotta compete with poppers, I'm asking.
So we, we've, we've looked at the sales around Dunkinville, there's an app that, that we pay for that allows us access to the tax records of restaurants around. And so, you know, we can, we will sell a lot of alcohol here, safely.
Okay, has everyone had an opportunity to have their questions answered? So, with that being said, then that brings us to the point where. The chair will entertain a motion.
We never opened public hearing.
We never opened a public hearing.
So you're gonna open it, the public, if they have anything to say.
I move that we open for public hearing.
Okay, okay, move the second, okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to take advantage of the opportunity to speak in favor of this initiative? Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to speak against this particular initiative? The chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Do we have a voice vote?
Okay, Harvey.
Four.
Payne.
Four.
Thompson.
Four.
All right, thank you so much. So any questions or comments about what we've heard within Cena before we call for a vote? With that being said, the chair will entertain a motion for a vote. And the ask is three hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes, what's on the agenda is three fifty, the ask, this evening is three seventy-five. Of which seventy-five will be provided to the applicants. A time of closing at three hundred will be provided to the bank and the bank will distribute those funds during the course of the renovations. And it'll be, we continue to have a three-party agreement. One of the things that we have proposed was that since there's a request for additional money, that we would also consider extending. The, the period of time of which the forgivable loan, from ten years to potentially three years or some different amount. Again, considering that there's an additional ask for monies that, we have that conversation and that, that at the end of the day, it's. Whatever the desire of the board wants to do, if they wanna keep it at the ten, keep it at the ten, if they want add additional years, that's up for discussion, interruption.
Okay, so the way forward then would be for a motion for a particular amount for a certain payback period? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Make it a law. Take this into executive session and table our vote. So I can.
Second.
Okay, as we move to second, everyone, let's call for the voice vote.
We're not ready to go into executive session, there's other business on the agenda unless we want, the board wants to consider changing the order of it. There is another matter on the agenda under other business, if we wanna, four A, if we wanna go through that.
Okay, so let's, let's move four A down to after we talk about this particular initiative in executive session. We need a vote on it?
Yeah.
Not prerogative, okay, yeah, let's go into executive session, right now. We are, we are going into executive session for.
Nobody to call, we just need to make sure to turn off the recording.
Okay.
To discuss this.
You're gonna stand here, okay. This is executive session under section five five one point oh eight seventy-two.
So give us a little bit to.
Yeah, please, thank you.
To turn off the recording, once the higher sign is off, we are in executive session.
Okay, we are going to close the executive session at eight twenty-six and go back into regular session. We have a question? Okay.
What is the seventy-five going to be used for, the seventy-five, additional seventy-five thousand dollars?
That's going to be for operating income and the final fixtures inventory. And that's where the majority of the startup costs for the restaurant is that opening inventory. You know, just getting us over so that we don't open in a deficit, so it's.
So it is under the same seventy-five that's listed under operating?
Yes.
Supplies and operations, okay. Now, if it's not granted immediately, would you all still be able to move forward with construction?
Yes.
Mike wants to have that.
For closing?
Yeah. So I mean, if it was a, is it like a late or what do you do?
I think the question from the board is why, why do you need the seventy-five thousand upfront? Why can't it be part of the forgivable? Or it is, it will be part of the forgivable loan, why do you need that at closing? They want us to have that so that the, that shows that our, that we're set, it helps provide relief for the Mezzanine Fund. And the bank to show that that money is in the bank and that we will have enough opening operating capital to successfully, you know.
So it's to show your reserves?
Yes. Yes, that'll just, that'll sit in there until.
One of the conditions that the Texas Mezzanine, the Pegasus Bank, you know, they wanna make sure that they're gonna make it, you know, in that ramp up.
Any other places for the board?
Would the Mezzanine, Texas Mezzanine Project or whatever? The Mezzanine Fund. Texas Mezzanine Fund, would they accept that money being placed in some sort of like CD or escrow account? Or do you need that, those funds in cash? That is.
To be used when they try it or how, what would, how would that work, what are you?
I'm, I'm asking if, is there a way for us to give the seventy-five thousand dollars in some, some other form other than cash to the applicant? Can we place it in an escrow account? With, that you have access to, but.
You just want them to have it instead of giving it to them at closing, is that what you?
That's what I'm asking, will the, would the Mezzanine Fund be okay with that?
Guess, so, I'd have to talk to them, I guess, yeah, I would guess. But he could draw it, draw it.
It would be available at closing, just not as, not in the form of a check, a check to you.
So you wanna just put in the, in there and they would draw it, he could draw it from them, it's, he needs free supplies or whatever he needs, so.
Yeah, cause you're, from my understanding, you need to show that amount in reserves. So if we put it in an escrow account, you're showing that it's there, that reserve money is there in the escrow account. Where you need the money when you're operational, which according to the way that the agreement is structured, you're required to obtain your CO approximately a year from now.
Yes.
So that money, you really won't need per se, if you will, just until a year from now. So could we put it in an escrow account, say, okay, it's set up, but before then, before you even have access to it. You have to build, finish the buildups, as opposed to giving you the seventy-five on the front end just to have it in an escrow.
Right.
Is there a different way?
So that would be triggered, it would be drawable or it would be usable once.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's drawable upon, cause the way it's written, the agreement is written is that by, is it May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, you have to secure a CO. That we could written it, write it as such that upon the issuance of the CO, the seventy-five thousand dollars is released or something that. That there's an additional milestone that while it's in there for this purpose, you don't wanna have access to it until you've completed the renovation.
I think that would get a wide check, but either you put it in Mezzanine or the bank, either one, I mean, what if?
Yeah.
You leave it open so they could, yeah, to be used for that purpose?
The board's renovation is just giving, up-fronting money that's not. The board's renovation is just giving, uh, up-fronting money that's not needed for the project, that's especially if it's gonna be used for the purpose of a, of a reserve and operating, that's really not gonna be needed until a year from now, because really the money that's needed is the three hundred thousand dollars for the improvements and everything.
I don't think it'll, it'll take a year, we just put.
No, it's written as such, but.
In case, worst case happens, here, we've had so much trouble here with fire marshals and people like that.
Yes.
They've delayed us for like six months, so that's the reason we put the long, the long date, this should take, this should take six months to do. It should ta, it should be open.
Yeah.
Much quicker than next May.
You want to put time in, in there that's reasonable, that in case things happen, that you don't have to come back and ask for an amendment or an extension that you already have the cushion, if you will, in place in the original agreement and not to have to come back with another request, another change.
So you'd put it either in the bank, one of the banks, either one.
Yes.
And then upon CO, it's gonna be drawn.
Yes, and that may be something that we may need to discuss with the banks, say, all right, how is it, because it is gonna be a, a three-way party agreement. We don't want to put language in there that maybe the, the bank is not comfortable.
You could just add it to the, you could add it to that agreement, I think, because they approved that agreement.
So we may have to reach out to Pegasus Bank to say, okay, what's the best way of doing it so that we can make the necessary changes to the agreement based on understanding what they will accept, then put something in there, assuming that that they, that, that's what they will accept. Only to have to come back and change.
It's actually fairly simple, right, upon CO?
But what, what I'm, what my understanding of what you said earlier is that the Mezz, the underwriters of the Texas Mezzanine Fund are, uh, in order to, to pass their approval.
And the bank.
And the bank, they need to have access to that seventy-five thousand dollars at closing.
Yes.
At CO, or the, or the bank, or the under, or the Mezzanine Fund won't.
Yeah, they have to have all of it to, to close, yes.
So the, the, the underwriters of the Mezzanine Fund are, they have a algorithm they use, and part of that al, part of the algorithm is they need to show so much money in the bank and have access to it at the time of closing in order to be funds. But we could put it in a, instead of writing you a check, they're, they're more than one skin of cat, I'm just trying to understand what you need.
We've, I've done these with you before, Patrick may remember, but we went to three-party agreement, which you can, those are controlled, the bank's controlling that under the direction of the agreement, of the tri-party agreement, that's what this would be, so whatever we agree to, they could, whatever you decide, they can agree to those terms and then abide by the, you know, those terms, so they're controlling the bank, so you're not having the money, so you're not having to do that. Here, and the bank's gonna be.
What I don't want to do is, is have the board approve something and then the bank go, no, and then we have to come back.
But I think with, without speaking for the board, it seems like the, the concern, the question was, is the applicant gonna have net proceeds at closing in this amount, sounds like that's not what's needed. So now we're back to close to what the original terms were, was some sort of drawdown scheduled milestones, and we just need to, you know, tighten up the language that reflects, okay, this additional increase in the funding amount, how we need to treat it in terms of access, but.
So, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, the three hundred goes into the bank with the rest of the interim loan money, the construction loan money, and it's all together.
Yeah.
And it just gets drawn, it's, the bills are turned in, just like a bank loan, it's like a regular interim bank loan, construction loan. And then the seventy-five thousand will be in a separate account or escrow, that once the CO was done, then he could start to access, access those funds. But the, and the bank would be watching, you, your, the bank would be watching those funds too and help, you know, controlling that, so he doesn't just pull it out and go to my, you know, for. I know he wouldn't, but, you know, but that's what your concern is, right, I mean, you want to make sure he doesn't misuse, you know.
If it's the board's desire to approve this request, could we, there be as part of the motion, language that provides Brandon with some flexibility as we work through this detail to keep this moving forward and not be in a situation where we're so re, maybe restricted, that if there's any change beyond that, it has to come back.
We, we don't have, and we don't have time to lose.
Exactly, because time is of the essence, can we agree it? The motion and Brandon.
Okay, so can you craft a motion that would say that and then that's?
Just, uh, so in your, whoever makes the motion, uh, make a motion for a total dollar amount, a number of years for the, uh, your forgiveness period. And a, uh, a motion, and including your motion, that the, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars will be available on terms, uh, agreed upon with, by legal counsel, both sides. I guess, or by staff or lender. Lender, lender, terms acceptable to the lender.
Okay, this has.
By the two lenders, the two lenders are gonna be in sync anyway, just the lender, lenders plural.
Thank you for coming. All right. The chair will entertain a motion.
All right, I would like to move that the board approve the three hundred and seventy-five dollar request for.
Five thousand. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
What did I say?
Three hundred and seventy-five.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Uh, amendment to the agreement.
Okay, I would, I move that the board approve amendment of seven, uh, increase of seventy-five thousand for a total of three, seventy-five thousand, for a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a ten-year forgiveness period, and the seventy-five thousand will be payable upon terms acceptable to the lenders.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, move to the second then. Let's have a roll call.
All right, Harvey.
Ford.
Payne.
Four.
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 Thank you, Ford, approve unanimously.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Art, still, you guys need it.
All right, all right.
Thank you so much. Would you like this close?
No. Now we have the matter of vice president? Oh, yeah, vice president, okay, so that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is, uh, vice president. The last time we convened, uh, we didn't have any thinkers for vice president, so, uh, let's talk about it, is, is someone just feel led to be? Someone just feel led to, to be vice president? If not, if we, if we can't get anybody interested, then my recommendation is that we just postpone it. Not have a vice president until the entire board, uh, gets appointed, and then maybe at that point, situations will change. Uh, one of the new people might say, hey, I can take this on, I can do this.
I move that we postpone the election of vice president until we have a full board. I second that.
All right, it's properly moved and seconded, so, um, let's do a roll call.
We got one down.
It's the trade.
Oh, God. Thompson.
Four.
Zilka.
Four.
Do we have an executive session?
We already have it.
We already have it. We already have it, okay.
We thought we were gonna come back into it.
It's not as easy as it looks, okay, uh, so there is no, uh, well, we did the appropriate action, so the chair will entertain a meeting adjourned.
We adjourned? Eight forty.
We have a second. Okay. It's, it's, it's unanimous.
Is there ever an opportunity when it's just uni, it's obvious unanimous, that we can avoid this?
So, uh, close the meeting, if there's no, nothing left on the agenda, the, the meeting chair can close the meeting without a vote.
And the meeting is closed at eight, uh, forty.